Meeting today. We'll get started with a MEAC update. And Admiral Gimbel, we certainly do thank you for your leadership of this fine group, and we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Sure, John.
You know, this is really apropos that we're getting this briefing here today. As you know, we just got off our two-day retreat. And so much of what we talked about was economic development initiatives and how it is that relates to our military and our exiting military. And Admiral Gimbel's here to give us an update on what they've been working on. But, you know, we could not be more fortunate for our community to have this group of folks that gets together. I'm shocked that they keep coming every single month, but they do. We don't give them anything, but they are all here.
It goes up the liaisons we have over there.
Well, I wish that were the case. But they'll tell you candidly, they're not coming because of me. But all of these folks really care about the people that work for them and the commands that they were in charge of here, and they have a big love of the city. And I know that we'll get an awful lot out of what they've done and what they're going to present today.
Very good. Look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, good to be here today. Going to talk about MEAC, Military Economic Development Advisory Committee. I have seven slides. I'm going to kind of speed through them a little bit with your permission, and then leave time at the end for questions and comments and so on. This committee was formed in 2008, sort of to stay ahead of the next BRAC, also to keep us surprised of the military downsizing that was starting about then, and as you know, kind of continues to this day. And what we really do is help make Virginia Beach the poster child for military-friendly cities. We enjoy doing that. That's really the thing that Councilman Urin talks about. That's what we do. And we're interested. I want to make a special note that Councilman Urin and his guys, that is Deputy City Manager Doug Smith and Warren Harris. There's Warren hiding in the back over here, keep track of us and keep us focused on what we're up to and kind of chivvies in the right direction when necessary.
Very good.
Coming quickly is Ben Davenport has another liaison to the committee here. So we're looking forward to that.
We told him not to mess it up.
We'll watch him, Mr. Mayor.
He's a rookie. He's a rookie. Good to see you, Admiral Dunleavy.
So how did I wind up being the head of MEAC? I have no idea. It's obviously an aberration in the system, although I've been here 45 years. I came here in 1970 to fly Phantoms, met my wife here. She taught school in Chesapeake and then at Kings Grant. And both my kids have grown up here, with the exception of one semester in Saratoga Springs, New York. They've been here. One of them's 39, the other one's 33 today. So we've been here quite a while. I did 33 years in the Navy, had all my ships at Norfolk and all my squadrons at Oceana, with the exception of a deep draft and a couple little quick tours to Hawaii, Pentagon, and Guam. And then after I retired on 01/01/01, one of the two dates I can remember without electroshock, I went to work for a company selling laser communication devices. And then I went to work for Bearing Point, which then became Deloitte, and I retired from them last summer. So I'm all yours now. And for the rest of us, Fran Wilson and Admiral Dunleavy and the rest of us around the room, we can tell you that the leaders of the Navy and Marine Corps are RJOs. In some cases, like mine, they're contemporaries of mine who I've known my whole career in the Navy and they're still functioning. Guys like John Greenert, the CNO of the Navy. In some cases, we have wonderful relationships with those guys. We find liaison comes naturally to us. We provide some knowledge, hopefully to you, about incoming and outgoing military activities that transfer in and out of the area. And we get some overlap in corporate entities, and I'll touch on that just a bit more here. And I think we provide a decent service in the synergy and the diversity of our networks. So that's really what we're here for. Fran is just coming off a tour as the USO President for Hampton Roads in central Virginia here. Steve is hiding over there. And Boeing. Al, many of you remember, worked at Navy Exchange, and that'll pop up on another slide as one of our -- and we claim it, MEAC claims it, as one of our success stories here, getting the new building, the new addition to the building built over there. In my mind, it's always going to be behind the Hummer dealer. The Buds, ex-Booz Allen. Paul not here today. Fenton's not here, but Fenton worked for SAIC and then Aggleston Industries. So we have a good, solid tie-in to nonprofits. And also not here today is Craig Quigley, who you guys know as the head of Haurumpha. So that's the other tie-in that we have here. And let's see, other folks going around the room. Dot is our BBDA liaison. Dick is Trowbridge, Gary Jones, and my main helper, Phil Olson, and my sea daddy, Dick Dunleavy, are hiding in the back over there.
Wood gives adult supervision to this guy.
She's good at that.
And the good news is, they still feel like I need adult supervision. So I guess that's something. Each of these slides will have things you can look at on there, but I'll try to talk to other things that aren't on the slide. Every month, we have a meeting, and we like to have a nonprofit or a small business talk to us at that meeting. That way, we get some idea of what the commercial side and the nonprofit side are worried about in addition to those things that we're doing in our outreach to military commands and so This is the point where I make my best effort toward, yes, Oceana and the ACUIZ purchases around Oceana. I know you know, but I can't begin to tell you how much that set of purchases and that setup has become the prototype for everything in all the services having to do with encroachment all over the country. It's no wonder they win awards every year. Some of the things we've done during the last couple of years include meetings with Secretary Harvey, who is now the Secretary of Veterans and Defense Affairs on Governor And we had that meeting along with, actually, we had two meetings, one before he went up there and one right after that. And we had that meeting along with the folks from Norfolk MEAC, which, as you can imagine, Couple of things we want to identify and have been identified as growth areas for Virginia Beach. We think cyber. Not only did they get 80,000 sets of credentials here from Anthem last week, but the attacks continue even to this day. And we also think that not only is that something that the people that get out of the Navy and Marine Corps and the other services here can find to do, but it's also something that we're set up for very well with the big pipes that come down here from DC and so on, the alternate Command Center construct. We've also looked at far-range things like F-35, LCS, Littoral Combat Ship. And we look at and pay particular attention to special warfare. Many of you know that this is one of the centers of special warfare. We try to keep that high in the profile for Virginia Beach and this part of the area, including the governor and so on. But we know that the public affairs profile for those guys need to stay as low as possible. So it's one of these kind of trade-offs. In the command briefings, and those are run under the auspices of Phil Olson, there are some employment numbers up there, too, that will show you the two big bases that you own. We heard several things when we talked to them. Number one, and probably the number one to each of you, is our schools. The schools are among the best in the state, and that's very, very critical. It takes one of those worries away from every person transferring in, and it takes one of those worries away from anybody who wants to stay here after they retire or exit the military. The good schools provide a sound basis for a family to do their job and raise the kids and do all those other things that make a city a city. Transportation, quality of life kind of speak for itself, and the desirable location when they're -- Dick, those people that have your kind of accent are waiting around in five-and-a-half feet of snow today, or seven. And down here, we're just putting up with a little bit of cool drizzle. So it's a nice quality of life down here, no doubt about it. This next one has a chance for me to talk about anything that I wanted to talk about. So I'll make a key, make a point about Princess Anne Commons and the health cluster up there. I think that's wonderful, and I think we need to push it some more. Wounded warriors and head trauma, the entrepreneurial spirit that builds on those things, I think will help us carry that a long way. And the VA home that's been talked about here will also help provide some synergy for that. Other things that we're all interested in, the arena, Burton Station, Camp Grom, wonderful project. Warrior Week, talked about cyber attacks, Lesnar Bridge. It's important to remember that not every city in Virginia or even in the country has the ability nor the foresight to look at their transportation. Most places let that, try to slough that off on the county or the state or federal government. Virginia Beach does wonderfully well in keeping the transportation squared away around here, and that arks back to the Lesnar Bridge project. Recreation, what can I say? It's all here. And the other things that we're interested in are VVV, the Virginia Values Veterans, and the Vet Transition. The Navy, at least for its part, has messed up the transition assistance program here lately. So we're trying to find ways to insert ourselves into that and give them some help, both from a look back from our retirement, a look ahead to things they should do, and trying to find a way to augment that with some commercial expertise in there. Finally, two things that I think we ought to point out on this slide are the homeless initiative. Nothing breaks my heart more than a homeless person and nothing more than a veteran. The Invision Virginia Beach, we look forward to working on that as time goes along here. Clearly, that's not something we need to drill in right this instant, but the longer we keep looking at it and thinking about it and getting the ideas together, the better off we'll be. So we hope you'll find MEAC to be a valuable city resource. It's free, as John said, and we hope to help make Virginia Beach a great place to live. Comments and questions?
We certainly do thank you for your presentation. Any questions or comments from councilmembers? Bobby?
Yeah, thank you, and sir. To let you know, I was an old Phantom fixer on the Jarhead side many years ago in ordinance. And God bless you for what you all did and still continue to do. As part of what we're working on with the small business initiative that we have with process improvement, we have a gentleman on our subcommittee, Tony DeSilvestro, who's one of the owners of Why Not Pizza. And one of the things we're trying to do is identify the barriers to small business startup and expansion. And Tony's passion is, he wants to have a pipeline. When somebody gets out of the military locally, they can go to one source or something and get into a pipeline where they can establish a business right here in Virginia Beach. So just to let you know that, you know, that's one of the things that we are working on. And, you know, but I can't tell you how much we value the military in this city. Thank you.
Wonderful. And we will reach out to him and see how we can help.
Great. That would be great.
You know, the other side of this is the VBgov.com. When you pick up that website, you see a link on there for veterans, you know, exiting military in the area. And that thing has been very, very active over the last four or five years since Dick and our predecessor folks have put it together and gotten it up and running, so that it's -- that very much helps. But along with that and the transition assistance program, there's more to do. There's always more to do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? John?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to continue to gush over what these folks do, but I --
That's okay.
But, I mean, it really is a spectacular resource for us. You know, it's interesting when I'm looking at these ads that our economic development folks have put together and how powerful those are. But I think it's important for this council to note that if we were to pull the economic development reports from 10 years ago, none of those would have been there, and there would have been little or no mention of the military at all. So, you know, the fact that, you know, this council has put such an emphasis on the value of our military and the fact that we have this group that continues to meet every single month to realize that we get some really good gains and some wins there is super positive. And we're doing the right thing, and we've made some good progress and had some successes. And as we keep to charge on it, I know they're going to be able to bring some more forward to you. And Admiral, thank you so much for your leadership and really making sure everybody continues to show up and get good things done.
I'm thrilled to be the head cat herder.
Well, I know I speak for the entire council, and a great big thank you for everything all y'all do. We really appreciate it. I will tell you, you know, being mayor of Virginia Beach is the greatest honor in the world, and I'll tell you one of the reasons it is. My wife and I have made more great new friends through the military in the last six-plus years than you can imagine. The only downfall is once you build up trust and respect for each other, guess what?
They transfer.
They're gone. So you got to start all over again. But I will tell you, it's just been an absolute honor to get and make so many new friends. It really has, and we look forward to continuing to do that. But we thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the new voting machine purchase. Donna Patterson from our General Registrar is going to be with us. Donna, how are you?
I'm great. How are you?
Doing great. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And you brought some of your board, I see.
Yes, I brought some of the board with me. I have Laura Lee Grimm, she's the Vice Chair of the Electoral Board, and Al Ablohich, the Chairman of the Electoral Board.
Well, we're glad to have both of them with you.
Thank you for allowing me time to talk. Really, when I asked to speak to City Council, it was to ask to continue with the procurement process for our new voting system. Basically, when the governor's proposal came about on December 15th, we were in the process of starting negotiations with a vendor at that time. And we kind of slowed things down, waiting to see what the governor's proposal, how those changes would happen. And now I'm just asking to move forward, and it looks like as of Sunday, the money isn't going to be there anyway. We, actually, there's a report from the House Appropriations Subcommittee, and for the capital outline, they have not put, the $28 million is not in the budget anymore. So we're asking to move forward. It doesn't look like there's going to be a plan where the state is leading it right now. And we're asking to move forward because really, if we have a June primary, we start voting on April 24th. And our desire is to not use our current voting system that we have, but to move forward with the new voting system, which is a totally different way of voting also, but to move forward with a new voting system for the June primary, assuming that we are having a June primary. We won't know until early April for sure whether or not we're having a June primary, but we are asking to move forward with the CIP funds that were allocated for us, to move forward with purchasing, with the vendor that we had actually selected. And I forgot to mention that I gave you in there in the packet, there's some letters, the letter, Mr. Mayor, that you wrote to the Secretary of Administration.
To get clarification.
And all of that. So I just wanted to ask to move forward with the project. We really don't want to use the current voting system for our June primary.
Well, counsel, we got to, we can't have these machines failing when people are voting. And I want to get that money from the state some way somehow, but we got to get on with the show unless someone objects. Let's get on with the show.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions at all?
Keep us posted on how we can get the money from the state if it gets put back in the budget.
I will. Can I make one comment? I just wanted to let you know that the Department of Elections did come to the city of Virginia Beach last week along with their consultant, and they did look at the voting machines that were pulled out of service on Election Day, and they did find, they're going to have a full written report, hopefully within the next month, but they did find that they were alignment issues because of the age, basically, of the voting equipment.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good afternoon. Okay, we'll get on with what we really want to get some direction here today, and I've got all the faith in the world we're going to have some. And first of all, I want to sit back and thank Barbara and her team that came back, came and made a recommendation. I want to thank Ben and John for coming up with some suggestions, too. But Catherine, I'm going to ask you, if you'd be so kind, to kind of go through, I think Mrs. Henley's got some recommendations and Ben's got some, but let's see, if you all don't mind, let's have Catherine show us what the numbers would be and take it from there, and then we'll get each person's input and get on with the show.
Y'all have in front of you a packet. It has a blue slide and then a bunch of orange slides. The blue slide is the committee's recommendation. It's replicated here.
Hey, this is the original committee's.
What the task force recommended.
Okay.
Just to kind of orient you, these are your current income threshold levels on this column. These are the current participants. All of these slides run against the 7,000 current participants and kind of tell you what happens to them. This is what the committee's proposed thresholds are, and this is the current participants as they would then fall out. So you can see you have a decrease, even at the committee's recommendation of folks who would get 100%. But the committee recommended keeping the freeze program so that everybody could still get patchily, if you recall Mike's presentation a couple weeks ago. So they kept that income threshold at the same, so everybody who's in the program could get something. Maybe not the same level they had, but they could get something. So Mrs. Henley's recommendation, I'm not going to go over every one of the orange slides. I'm going to hit three and six in your presentation packet, but I'll certainly be happy to answer any of the other options that we've looked at. This option came forward from councilmembers. It recommends setting the income thresholds at 60% of the median household income.
Okay, let me make sure, which one am I looking at now?
It's number three in your packet. It's orange.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
The other ones were doing it at 50% or 55%. I think Mrs. Henley and Mr. Davenport felt like this was a good one. It's fairly close to the committee's recommendations.
Okay, this number three is recommended by who right now?
Nobody. This is an option that the council recommended, or council suggested we look at. And so all we did was run the numbers.
Ben, go ahead.
Well, I think Mr. Moss and I met last night, and I think that this was our recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, that's right. You're not.
No, because the three couldn't. But if you remember that John Moss at the retreat had some comments, and so that's what these were built on, with his idea that we needed to base it on something firm, and his suggestion was the median household income number. And so that's the 62,855. And so this one is, this one and number six are using that number for their basis.
Okay. Thank you.
And the committee's recommendations were based on the declining house value, the task force's recommendation.
It was just a true-up.
Yeah.
You know, if it hadn't had that anomaly with the, what it was using for the.
Well, truthfully, what we're trying to do is have a true-up of some type.
Right, absolutely. That's what we're trying to do, is to get the program back to a level that it can be supported and ongoing.
Okay, thank you.
The same thing. I show you your current income thresholds and then what the proposed would be. Again, this is 60% of the 62,855, and then it just increases at $3,000 increments till you get to a maximum value income threshold of $49,713. Again, you can see what happens to the participants in terms of how they move around in the categories. I didn't mention that the task force's recommendation would reduce the cost of the program by $3.3 million. This option would reduce the cost of the program by $3.6 million. If you want to do a house value cap, which I think was discussed, the committee didn't recommend it, it would increase your savings by about half a million dollars if you capped it at the current median home value in the city. There's some issues with that we should talk through if you want to go that route. Under this option, what I understood was there would be no freeze or deferral. So 1,400 people would fall out of the program currently, that are currently in the program if there's no safety net for them as under this structure.
That's if you put the cap on.
It's a combination of the cap, but it's not really the cap. It's really changing the thresholds downward.
But down here, it says, talks about the cap, and then it says 14.
The cap causes, people get a less level of relief. Let me talk about the cap just real quick if you want to go that route. Basically, between 0 and $247,000 in this instance, home value, you would get some relief. If your house was $500,000, the amount over this amount, you'd have to pay 100% of the taxes due. That's what the cap strategy does. So the capping of the home value doesn't change. does. So, the capping of the home value doesn't change the participants. The only thing that changes the participants is whether they qualify for the program under income. The cap just says they would get less relief, and therefore their cost of the program would be reduced more.
Jim Wood had a question.
Just to put this in perspective, what is one penny on the real estate tax now?
About $4.9 million.
Okay, thanks.
Shane.
Does the committees take, have a cap as well?
No.
Okay.
The committee looked at a cap and then did not recommend that we do a home value cap. So that's option three, at 60% of the median household income. Option six came in and it's the same thing, current threshold. What it did is set this value at 50% of the median household income, and it set the maximum program cap at the median household income. And then we computed the difference, about $7,800 between each level, to get the variations of this. You can see there's a dramatic change in the number of people who get 100%, about 2,800 people, but the people who would get 60 and 80% really jump, because everybody gets to stay in the program. Everybody was in, except for 203 participants fell out. Again, if there was no safety net of keeping a freeze or deferral program.
Where did this one come from?
Me.
Okay.
This one, and I was just thinking along, you know, thinking about what, this idea of using the median household income, because one of the things that was a real concern of the committee was the people who were going to fall out, who, you know, who would not be eligible for anything. The current maximum, really, of exemption is $64,675. So this keeps the, most of the people who were able to get any exemption at all are kept into the exemption, and-
But not just as high, not as much-
Just not as high. So these people are still, most of them, except for the folks who would be between that 62,855 and what we did have as a freeze amount of 68,293, those would be the people who would be dropped out, the people between 62,000 and 68,000. Now the way we could cure that was just continue the freeze program, and then everybody would stay in. But anyway, this, this just allows folks to get some exemption and not be totally dropped out. Although it does, of course, cut down the savings, drops it down to $2.9 million.
But I see that. Here's my question, and this is a council question, I guess, more than anything. Why don't we keep the deferral and let that be a safety net? I'm of the belief that we're gonna get our money that way. The question is when, and if we want to put an interest rate on it, I think 8% is too high. I think we get John Akerson to give us what he's getting at the end of each year, what his average interest rate was on CDs, use that rate, you know. And I think to have, and again, I'm thinking out loud with y'all, I want to do whatever you all want to do, but it seems to me if it could be deferred, it is, you know, a saving, we're not forcing anyone out of their home, and the city will get their money. I mean-
It's such a small number.
A couple of-
It does, but it could increase with some of these levels costing them more money.
A couple of-
Particularly if we go to the three, the income at 60% of median, where you're currently at 1,440 participants.
I'm focusing on yours right now, number six.
Okay. Well, whoever gets, the people who are going into the deferral are going to be the people who would be paying the most tax.
Correct.
And so as you, as you increase the number of people who are going to be paying tax, then they're likely to go into the deferral. The reason we've had so few going into the deferral is because the exemptions were so high.
Correct.
However, you know, the down, what I hear from people about why they don't want to go into the deferral is they don't want to leave a property with a lien on it for their heirs. My response to that is the heirs could be helping with the taxes.
That's where I'm coming from too. I totally agree with that statement.
So, you know, you can argue back and forth, but I think those of you who've had a shot at trying to do this have understood that this is a heck of a hard nut to crack. It's really, really tough to, you know, to get this genie back in the bottle and try not to hurt people too bad. But if we don't get it back in the bottle, we kill the program.
I've got John and then Jim Wood.
Well, I, you know, kind of piggybacking to some degree off of what Barbara said. I mean, you know, a lot of what we've talked about in terms of the real estate tax, in terms of our frustration with it, is it's based on what somebody owns and not their ability to pay. And so, I mean, we've long had that recognition. And so, you know, really when we're talking about number three, you know, and we're gonna start capping, you know, what the value is before you get relief, that doesn't take into impact what it is that we all know is underlying issue, and that's really talking about someone's ability to pay. So, you know, even though, you know, as a soundbite, if somebody's got a million-dollar home and they're getting all of this tax relief, you go, well, how can that happen? But, you know, certainly for those of us that have seen over the last 20 or 30 years, you know, what real estate values have done, I mean, someone who was on very limited means, if they made the right purchase, you know, many, many years ago, could be living in a million-dollar home, and that doesn't mean that they're, they're wealthier, that they have the ability to pay. And so, adding a component in there that caps that gives me a little bit of pause, because we've long recognized that disparity between, you know, the way it is that we tax people and what the equity is. But, but having said that, I mean, there is value in terms of that million-dollar home, and there has been appreciation, and there will be at some point in time the ability for someone to pay, you know, when it is ultimately sold or moved on. And so, you know, having a deferral program that doesn't impact someone who is having a challenge coming up with the income level to pay for that, but still keeps the city whole, has an awful lot of merit in there.
Can you live with a deferral? I think it's fair.
One, one thing you might want to, just throwing out issues here. A lot of cities have said, we've always kept ours from 0 to 68, made it entirely up to them. So you could have somebody who would qualify here choose the deferral or not. Some cities said, we'll only go from the lowest level in the exemption program to whatever we want to set the maximum level for deferral, so that you can't self-select into the deferral program. If they, if a bunch of them self-selected a deferral program, the amount of the program cost may not be as great.
But we'll eventually get that money, though.
Eventually.
That's, that's my only point there, Catherine. I mean, that, that's surefire money that's gonna come to us. And we put a reasonable interest rate, I mean, an 8% interest rate is unfair. You know, before you know it, in a number of years, they might not have any equity in the house. But, you know, I would sit back and say to you that, you know, we base, and I'll let you all figure out how we're gonna, what their interest rate will be, okay? But you get the gist of something like-
Provides that safety net.
Yeah. Yes, Shannon. Oh, I'm sorry, Jim Wood and then Shannon, I'm sorry.
Just trying to figure out the mechanics of the deferral program, and I'm assuming that the freeze program is pretty much off the table. Nobody's really advocating for that. So, with the deferral program, does that put a lien on the property then? Is it a tax lien on the property?
Yeah, Dana, don't sit down, because I'm gonna need help. Yes, it puts a tax lien on the property, and that tax lien adjusts every year based on the deferred taxes, as I understand it. And there's an issue, we've never had a problem, because there's always been a very small number of people in the program.
Right.
If you start moving it into the 1,000 people-
Because we're gonna start pushing people into that, and that's my concern, because with mortgage companies and things like that, if you've got a tax lien on the property, I mean, are you in default to your mortgage? And I don't know that, that question, but I, I know, generally speaking, you know, mortgage companies tend to frame on, on the whole tax lien thing, and then they're also, my understanding, they're in second place, correct?
Well, that I don't know.
They're in, they're in second place for the first 10% of value of the sales price. After that, it's only for that first 10%.
Say that again now.
So, the lien has priority for up to 10-
Tax lien does.
The tax lien has priority, and Dana, correct me if I get this wrong, but it's, it's a priority for the first 10% of the sales price. So if the property sells for $500,000, our lien would have priority for the first $50,000 in taxes. After that, other liens, all other liens come before it.
So then we drop to the bottom?
Correct.
That's what he said. That's part of the reason why the committee didn't recommend the deferral program.
Okay.
The other kind of big re-
You might not actually collect it then.
Well, you might not, but that would be someone with a pretty steep, they're gonna lose their house anyway. If they can't pay their taxes and they got a mortgage that's getting ready to, you know, I would say that's going the wrong direction regardless.
Yeah, I mean, that'd mean there'd be no equity left for the survivor.
Yeah.
Well, just to talk about the freeze program a little bit, because, you know, everything has got its pros and cons. And I, I've been asking the attorneys there, what about the people who have been in the freeze program up until now? Because that number is bigger than the deferral number. I think it's about 50 in this year, 49 or something. Okay, when they, the years that they took to freeze, they, they took the freeze with the understanding that their taxes were gonna be frozen at that amount for the future. So now, we do away with that, then they're no, they, they don't have that option.
Can that be grandfathered?
That's what they're telling me, no.
I would, I would want to get an opinion, the law's not clear on that. I, I don't, I think there's a concern with you treating similarly situated taxpayers dissimilarly, and before I would recommend that you do that, I'd recommend you get an Attorney General opinion on the state code provision that sets this up and authorizes it. But I'm, I'm not at all confident that you could grandfather them.
So that would automatically, they'd probably go into the deferral right then and there.
Maybe. I, I don't, you know, it's hard to say. But then when you look at the people who are in the freeze, they are paying taxes. They're paying their taxes-
Above that.
-of every year of the year that they went into the program. So they're not folks who are not paying taxes. They're paying taxes. It's just that they are not having any increases if their assessment increases or if they're, if we increase the tax rate. So, that's why the committee felt that the freeze was that good safety net, so that we don't have to, you know, we're not taxing people out of their homes if we, if their assessments keep going up or if we raise the tax rate. They're, they have a way of controlling that, that tax amount to remain where it is now. And so, that was the feeling with the committee on, on keeping the freeze, because if somebody goes into the freeze program at the, at the age of 65, you know, and folks thankfully are living longer these days, you know, they may be in that program for 20 years or so. Same with deferral. They may not pay taxes for 20 years. So, it can be a pretty long-term thing. And the interesting thing about this, this program, it used to be, you know, the state kind of told us how high we could go and not go and everything. My understanding now is the state is out of it, as long, as long as they're non-veterans. But the state is out of it, except for the age of entry, 65. We can't change the age of going in, it's 65, but we can change other things however we want to, so.
It doesn't sound like y'all have much interest in the house cap, based on your conversation. But, and the other thing, there is a bill in the General Assembly to not allow localities to do the house cap anyway. I have no idea what the status is. I wasn't able to track it down before we got in here.
That's just in reference to the deceased spouse?
Oh, is it? Okay.
So as it went in last year, it went in with a cap at the median residential, single-family home, so excluding townhomes, condos, but basically your, your single-family residential, that became the point at which you have to be beneath that in assessed value. They're, as far as I know, getting rid of that piece of it. So anyone with a deceased spouse would then be able to get it.
Shannon?
Did this look at the assets, you know, it's right now, they're qualified, it's $350,000 in assets excluding the residence. Did this take into account changing?
That's excluding the residents.
Yes, uh-huh. Every, none of these recommend changing that at all.
Correct.
It would still say it's $350,000. Now, the committee looked at possibly changing the assessed, that estate amount of value, but decided to just leave it simply because it just got things complicated more.
That $350,000 could be cash, correct?
It could be. It could be cash, it could be as, as the-
I get it, but I mean, that clicks with me a little bit stronger, though. You know what I mean?
Well, you know, there was the thinking too, that anybody that's got $350,000 could afford to pay some taxes. So, this was the idea that, you know, maybe not everybody needs to be in that 100% exemption amount, you know, but some, one of those percentages wouldn't, would still be a, a big help, so.
Jim?
How do we qualify these participants?
Yes, the Commissioner does that.
Mr. Commissioner, do you want to answer how you qualify them?
Rigorously.
And they, I think they said that they handle each application on average of four times. It's, it's a pretty extensive operation for that department. They've got a lot of hours put in this program.
Well, you know, there's someone with a great mind at this table, hadn't made a recommendation yet. Mr. Spoor.
Oh.
Hey, that's why you get the big bucks. What are your thoughts, really?
Part of the challenge here, I think, whatever you come up with, you have to be able to explain it to the public. And I like the notion of the committee's recommendation. It's a true-up. It's fair. If anybody had had the benefit those previous five years, they've just had a windfall. We're just trying to get it back to the original intent of the program, and it's easy to explain. There's a lot of wisdom in the committee's work and recommendation.
All righty.
Let me ask a question, if I may.
You sure can.
On the deferral, Mark, where do you look? On the deferral, can those people who are in the deferral program, can they take out a reverse mortgage?
Yeah. Not a restraint on that.
There's not?
No, it's, it's, it's really a, if you will, an incoherent lien. So at a point in time, sale or passing along, something will be due, but it's not a current debt that would restrict that.
So if, if some, if somebody had a tax, had a lien-free home, and they went into the deferral program, and say they lived 20 years, and they, they borrow basically the value of the home in this reverse mortgage, then the only thing we can get is the $50,000, and the, the reverse mortgage people get the balance. Is that right?
The reverse mortgage would have to pay out the, when it came into existence, would pay out the, the debt that was recorded for the taxes.
It would throw them out based on income.
Yeah.
But it would only be $50,000 max.
No, because what Phil's saying is, if I'm, if I'm right, is once you get that money in for a reverse mortgage, your income-
Goes up.
Goes up, and then you're out of the program. So that, that one, because-
That may or may not be. I mean, you know, you could have somebody who doesn't, who only has, say, Social Security, and in fact, I know a lady, that's the case. And she only has Social Security, and she did a reverse mortgage on her home, and eventually she, they just ran out of equity. That's all in the home, and now she doesn't have a home. But, and what I'm saying is, assume that's the case, do we retain even our $50,000?
Our, it's, our 10% is still at the front of the line. The priority 10%, it runs with the land.
Okay. Okay, so we get our $50,000, is that right?
So for this example, the 10% is $50,000? Is that what you're saying?
$500, uh, $500,000.
Okay, okay, okay.
If it's a $500,000 home.
So, yeah, we're first in line for that amount.
Oh. First in line for 10%.
That's correct.
Is what it, so, and, and if, but the, if the deferral over years has been, I don't know, $200,000 or $300,000, and, and the person goes out and takes a reverse mortgage on the home, eats up all of that equity, then all- eats up all of that equity, then all we, they've taken all that money that would have been accessible up to us because of the deferral.
Dana.
And we only get 10%. Is that right?
But can I, maybe I can go a follow-up?
I want clarification. Excuse me one second, then I'll get to you, Jim. If there's a lien on that property for $200,000, and the house is worth 500, and they want to go get a reverse mortgage, that reverse mortgage will not go behind that $200,000. That $200,000 would have to be paid off by the reverse mortgage.
One would assume that's an underwriting standard, that you would have to do.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay, because I mean, that just wouldn't fly. Okay.
But the reverse mortgage still eats up the equity of the house.
Exactly.
And so we could, we could be stuck for 10%, whatever the 10% is, when in fact, we probably, if the person lives over a long period of time, we could probably have deferred the entire value of the house.
Conceivably. Shannon? Oh, excuse me, it was Jim.
Okay, so let me just ask another question. So are the majority of the people who participate in this program, are they, do they own the homes without a mortgage?
I'm sorry?
The majority of the people that participate in this program own the homes without a mortgage. And the reason I ask that is because under a traditional mortgage, they're escrowing taxes, insurance, and that sort of thing. I mean, I.
Do you have any sense, Phil? I'm not familiar with the data.
I would be just winging the number up. We haven't maintained that, or I don't have that data yet. I could follow up and see what we have and give it to you.
Well, the reason I say that is because, you know, the mortgage company is typically gonna accrue for the taxes because they don't want the city to come back and.
Right. If there's a mortgage, the taxes should be current.
But not every mortgage, older mortgages may not have an escrow account, if I understand that correctly.
Well.
Different kinds of mortgages.
Yeah, vast majority of mortgages, if it's a plain, simple mortgage, is escrowing taxes and insurance.
Yeah, so I guess where I'm going with this is using Louis's scenario here of a reverse mortgage, you know, that's gonna be a situation where the people probably own the home free and clear, they do the reverse mortgage. So it would seem to me, the first thing that would happen would be the company would end up paying off that tax debt.
That's correct.
Or the tax liability. And then, so, I mean, I kinda like the deferral program as an umbrella or as a parachute.
I tend to believe that. And I think also, the other side of that coin is, if you're really helping someone, and the expense of a reverse mortgage is pretty expensive. The upfront costs are, you know, it's, granted, they don't pay them per se, but it's taken out of that equity, you know.
Amelia?
I just wanted to ask, because when you mentioned about how they're qualified, and you said rigorous, you're in that study. You still have a little bit more to go for the study?
Well, we're two-thirds of the way through a three, a triennial review. But I really, I think that the council, the task force, all deserve great credit for, quite frankly, an earnest review of this program. And it is, it's tough to get a hold of. But the manager's suggestion to go towards the trued-up numbers, that is very defensible, it's fair-minded, and it's responsible. And I think Mrs. Henley's suggestion really looks at something that is not an abrupt change, but it is a deliberate change. It's like, we have to get control of this, but we are going to be fair and keep as many people active, and it is possible. When you talk about the deferral.
Yeah.
And the freeze, it's been nominally used over the years because, quite frankly, we've had, the council has provided such a generous exemption option. That would have to be brought into reality with today's economy and the like. And I would suggest that you consider the deferral and/or the freeze, but at least the deferral for the next couple of years. And let me report back to you. Over the last eight years, there've been 103 people in the deferral program. There's 13 in there this year. And that's because the exemptions are so generous. I still don't think that you're gonna see a mass exodus towards the deferral. There are about 1,400 people that would be sent in that direction, and they may take it. But the last point I would make, seniors right now that are dealing with that are part of what a generation, I think that it's quite frankly, a very prideful generation. They pride themselves on paying their bills as best they can. They don't want to pass on the debt to their children. But they may not be able to do that. And the deferral gives them a net, and it allows the city to collect this money eventually.
They can stay in their homes.
They can stay in their homes.
Ben?
I have a question, and two questions. One, if we were to leave in the deferral program, and you had an exodus of people jumping into the program, would we be able to review that next year, or would we have to wait three years to review that?
Next year, I could give you a report. Again, I'm only looking at a third, but as we replace this program, there's gonna be a lot more traffic into our office, whatever revision is.
Well, let me ask you, I mean, from the standpoint of just the logistics of the deferral, would we have, I mean, enough people to handle if 1,000 people jumped into the deferral program right now?
I'm only one floor away. You'll probably hear me scream.
I've got an idea. And counsel, again, I'm thinking out loud with everyone here. Let's look at item number six and put in allowing a deferral to be done, and have a public hearing on it next Tuesday. And that, and again, that's the one we'll be focused on, but we'll hear from the public and if we have something to, you know, different, you know, they can look at these other things that have been out there. What are the thoughts there? Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, that gives transparency to the process, too, because that way they get input in.
Okay, so is that all right with y'all?
This one seems to hurt less people.
It seems to be, it's not as much money as it was originally, but it still seems to be fair to me.
And would we implement it? We talked about phasing, but would we just go ahead and implement it rather than phasing?
I think, you know, my gut is to go ahead and get it done.
So I always remember Lyle and the cocker spaniel's tail. Remember that story?
I don't.
Well, I always talked about the cocker spaniel's tail, and they would go in and they'd chop a little bit off, and it was painful. Then they'd come back and chop a little bit more off.
More painful.
Still, it would taste all over again. And so instead of having like three pains, have one pain.
Okay, Jim?
You know, I kinda go with the manager's recommendation here, and the only reason I say that is if we're talking about. Well, I'm just going back to that.
Let's advertise that one.
Well, the reason I say that is because if the criteria is to impact the least number of individuals, this basically, according to their calculus here, that people would be shifted around, but it looks like there would be, everybody would be involved.
Well, he has such a great mind.
Well, what would be here, difference between the committee's recommendation, would be, instead of the freeze program, it'd be available as a safety net.
It would be the deferral.
Right.
Yeah, I prefer the deferral, frankly.
However, but when you go to that, then that hits 203 people who get completely moved out.
Well, yeah, well, we would put.
Unless we had the deferral in.
Deferral as an option.
And as long as these 203 people.
Yeah.
Actually fit into the deferral category, which we'd have to figure that, yeah, but not all of them necessarily.
Well, see, the deferral, if we were going to say deferral was offered, then it would be up to the 68, 263, 293 level. But the deferral would be offered.
That might not end up being a change at all.
Which is the same thing as what's here.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's the same as here.
Yeah.
So I would say either one of them, either one of these three.
Shannon?
Well, I understand the total number is impacting less in version six, but if you look at the committee's suggested one, it's impacting less of those that really needed the most. Because if you look at the lowest income levels.
I had to talk through that.
You've got a higher number of folks taking the 180%, because they make the least amount of income. Looks to me like that affects those folks really.
I'm very flexible.
I think if they're out there, it gives everybody another week to listen to the public because we know that these are all possible.
I guess, Mayor, the only question I have is if we're gonna take six and add the deferral in there, I'd like to see what that impact is because it seems to me, you know, because we're at 2.9 million savings on this, we had the deferral in there, I wonder if that actually adds more people.
Well, it should.
And keeps us basically the same place we are right now.
It would.
And at that point, then why do we change it? Whereas the committee.
Well, the reason, because you'll get your money eventually.
Well, yeah, but we already have that now, under, as is, is what I'm saying. So I don't know if this will end up saving us any money. And that's kind of what I'd like to see.
The great mind has got it.
I wanted to footnote my recommendation. And I don't want to make it any more complex, but I just think in terms of an equity issue, whether you do six or the committee's recommendation, I think the cap at the median household income is a good idea in terms of fairness to working families that are struggling as well. And I think that's defensible. So if you did, as Mrs. Henley did, in number six, and went to the 62, 855, I think, and that would, and the other footnote would be, I'd eliminate the automatic adjustment feature. I think the council needs to put your touch on this every year, so we just don't get this to happen again.
We said that last week.
Yeah, we took that out, right. We did that at retreat.
Great, we did that, all right.
All right, would you repeat your motion?
Well, I don't think there's a motion, but I think we have a public hearing next week. Period.
You know I was kidding, but, okay. Well, we just put a line, what do you recommend here?
Do you want us to draft up a couple of ordinances for next week?
Yeah, I think let's have, let's have both of them then.
But it's not gonna be voted on. I want the public hearing on them.
The difference with six and the committees is that you have more people who are getting a little bit of actual dollars reduction. Whereas here, it cuts off the percentage exemption, you know, at 50,000. But then it throws more people into the safety net, you know, which is fine. And so, but it could, you know, with keeping the deferral in, you know, this one could be reduced. Those are all the pros and cons. So I think just putting them both out there and getting some feedback, and that gives everybody another week or two to think about it, too.
Ben, you okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely. The only thing I would ask is if we could add number three proposal in there also.
Put it in there. Put her in there.
But if we do this, can we add, because we've shifted some stuff around here, talking about adding deferrals and things like that. I'd like to see that impact, yeah, on that. I mean, the impact not only on the number of people served, but also the impact on.
Catherine, can you get that forth, please?
Yeah, maybe. I'll have to see. The problem we've always had is there's no way to tell how many people will go into the deferral, because a whole lot of other factors start figuring in. Phil mentioned, I don't want to burden my kids. I don't want to, you know, eat up all my equity. So those kind of issues start factoring into people's choices. We, the committee just made the assumption that if you couldn't get anything else, you would take that option. Plus, you're gonna get it 30 years down the road, maybe, if they live that long, or they don't sell their house for 30 years, so.
If you just take the, I'm okay. If you come up with a number based on people currently in the program that get shifted out would go to this or something like that, I mean, I'd just like to see the numbers and see the impact, you know, on us and then the impact on the people that are being served.
Okay. Let me see if I got it straight, so I know what I'm doing. The committee's recommendation, instead of the freeze, do a deferral.
Right.
But what they recommended. Option three, those thresholds, but with a deferral program.
Right.
Okay. And then option six, those thresholds, but with a deferral program. Okay.
And how many people would be kicked out of the program?
Okay.
Well, if you've got deferral, everybody would be able to go to that.
They would have a choice of something.
So essentially, everybody would have a safety net.
So you've still got an option for everybody.
So we're keeping deferral in, no matter what, all three?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Can we add a time limit on the deferral? So that we're not.
No.
That it's not an item.
I think when you start looking at this thing annually, like, what's gonna be, next year, if all of a sudden 500 people went into the deferral, that tells you something. If it's just 13 people, I would suggest we do away with it next year, not now.
So we're gonna at least keep the task force active?
Well, I think you'll have the numbers of who's signed up to be where by what June, won't you?
We haven't gotten the letters out. We're five weeks behind.
But I mean, we can look at this, say, in August or September. We don't have to be at this time next year doing it.
That's a good point.
We'll have the opportunity to make adjustments next year.
And that's the point. We can, based on what we think the amount of people that will be put out of any type of exemption, we can give you a read on what the deferral would be. But I think the mayor is absolutely correct when he points out that, you know, we can annually look and see what the deferral is, and we can monitor that way.
The mayor is absolutely correct. Did you hear that?
You go, another great mind.
It is, I mean, this way, you're not forcing anyone out of their home.
And there is interest charge on the deferral.
Yes, yes.
You'll put an interest on it.
Figure out a fair interest rate.
I'll get with John and figure out an interest rate.
Cities cost borrowing money, right? It'd be adjusted every year.
There you go. Very simple. Counsel, that was good discussion, and I think, you know, having the public hearing next Tuesday, we'll get input.
If you guys can give us a decision by March 3rd, then we can build the budget around whatever you decide.
And Phil can get his letters out. Do you want me to post, do you want me to draft an ordinance and put it in your packet? How do we get that information out to the citizens? Do you want me to post it to the website?
Yes.
Maybe.
Website, and we're gonna have it advertised in the paper.
Okay, with the three options?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll work with Ruth then.
Just so we're clear, this actually snapshot might be a lot easier than looking at an ordinance, because an ordinance would be striking through, it would be adding, just for the second presentation.
So I'll get with Ruth, and we'll get cleaned up three options, and we'll run the ad accordingly, and I'll post it to the website.
And in that discussion and analysis of each one, just leave out the whole bit about the cap, and so we don't have that as a confusing factor.
Yes, yep.
We'll post three on the website.
Well, we gotta get it done. And the paper needs the money.
We'll call them and see if we can sweet-talk them a little bit. Ruth's got influence.
Yeah, don't let me call them. All right, that was great discussion. The other item has been removed at the request of Mr. Moss.
Oh.
Okay. And counsel, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Just, I would tell you that I will not be here next week. I'll be out of the country with most of my children and all my grandchildren. And understand, this was, scheduled this when our meetings were different, you know, planning and.
Oh, no, that happened.
Regular, so otherwise, I'd be there. So I apologize for that, okay? But we'll adjourn, and I thank you very much.